As long as Jeff can say born and unborn.
Yeah.
Okay, it is Tuesday, July 28, 2020. We'll call them in to order. Please stand up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn.
Minutes of reports received and filed?
Done.
Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Got a fair going on, fair auction tomorrow night. Renegades have some ball tomorrow night. They got their home run derby, too. Have ribbon cutting at the Jefferson City Parks Community Park, the Southwest Park. Been hearing some pretty good things about that. About all I got to.
Okay. Yeah, Wednesday through Saturday sidewalk sale downtown, so.
Sidewalk?
Yeah, and then Monday through Saturdays, the county fair. Sunday, I get the usher at 7:30. Monday, we're doing the care workshop. And then our commission meeting next week is going to be on Wednesday, as opposed to Tuesday, so that the clerks can use our chambers for the vote counting and everything, so. And that's all I've got. Commission comments? No bids and contracts? Gosh. Unfinished business? New business accounts payable review?
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
All right, make motion to pay the accounts payable upon review.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Second final reading of budget adjustment number 13.
Okay, this is for $48,306. This is for the law enforcement center's budget is the DSSSF grant for the salary supplemental grant. But I do need action today.
Here, you make the motion, I'll second it.
I'll just say court order number 13. That's about all we do.
Okay, make motion to approve court order number 13.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second final reading of budget adjustment number 14.
This is for $103,483.12. This is for the insurance proceeds that we received on the health department's roof. So just need that approved today.
All right, make motion to approve court order number 14.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, second final reading of budget adjustment number 15.
This is for $10,492.54. This is the law enforcement center, and this was a vehicle that was damaged.
All righty, make motion to approve court order number 15.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will shift around a little bit. Discussion of staff for CCHD to assist with contact tracing.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As you know, we're doing really great keeping up with our new cases that come in. You know, all the nurses and a few other people have been trained to do the contact tracing. So at this time, we're keeping up. I know that a lot of other health departments are. One near St. Louis, they were like 450 cases behind, but we contact everybody, you know, within 24 to 48 hours, depending on when they come in. But in the event that we do get overwhelmed or went back to school M's start ramping up or school clinic, school flu clinics start ramping up and our nurses are busy doing other things, we want to have a couple part-time staff that we can call in that have been trained that can help out with contact tracing to make the process go faster and to help our staff. So I would like approval to hire two part-time staff at $25 an hour to help with contact tracing.
Yeah, we had talked about that already.
Yeah, and that's a little bit more than what our base nurse salary is, but again, they're part-time staff. They won't get any benefits and they will be on call. Like, we will have to call them and say, hey, you know, the results we get in from this state, they come any time of day. We don't know. We could get none all day, and then we get an email at 4:30 with, with results and we act on them as quickly as we can. So we really need these, these persons to be on call and be able to come in.
And these are nurses, too, so.
Yeah, actually, yeah. They're both retired nurses that we've talked to. We could solicit more applicants if you'd like, but we know these people and they're, they would be trained and very trustworthy with the confidential information, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Somewhere down the road, you might need more yet.
Right, but we, like I said, we don't need them now, but we want them in our back pocket in case we do. And we'll go ahead and get them trained and have them ready to help us, so. It'll take very little training, though.
Yeah, we talked about that. Now, your concern is training them, and you've got a couple of them that are familiar, so I was gonna say. Yeah, I'm fine with it.
I am, too.
Thank you.
Sam, you want to vote?
Yeah.
Do you want to wait for Chris?
So, yeah. Did we have a number of hours we were gonna limit that to, or?
With part-time, we would have to keep them less than 20 hours a week, which at this time, I don't think that'll be a problem.
As far as budget purposes go, do you have, what do you anticipate we would need to transfer for, for part-time?
No, but I can, I was gonna do $25 an hour, so. Yeah, we'll estimate and send that to you.
And so we'll come up with a transfer based on the estimate.
Okay.
Then you guys can approve that transfer.
From the CARES Act funding.
Okay.
And make sure we take that out of the CARES.
Do you need an $10 improvement to part-timers?
If you don't mind just putting that in there, that you approved the health department to hire two part-timers for tracing, contract tracing.
Not to exceed 20 hours per week? Is that what it was?
Yes, per person.
Okay, so make motion that we approve the health department, two part-timers for training, not to exceed 20 hours per person at 20.
For contact tracing, training.
I second.
Contact tracing, not to exceed 20 hours per employee at $25 an hour.
Yes, thank you.
I second. You want to discuss that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Signing of surplus title?
Two surplus titles here. Unfortunately, one is sheriff and one is the juvenile. I'm sorry, this one is, yes, juvenile. Both vehicles were totaled, so we're just sending these titles back to the insurance company. We're having a run.
So did Michael get on the agenda for replacing that car?
Yes, it's on the next one.
We're gonna have a cage, though, we gotta get for that, too, because apparently they couldn't get the cage out of that one.
Oh.
There was nothing. What I understood was worth salvaging. It was, the water was up to the roof and they couldn't even get the speedometer reading back up, so.
Well, fine with the surplus title. If he needs to get on the agenda, we just need to get it on there.
It's on the next one, too.
Okay.
Okay.
I move that we sign the surplus titles.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll keep moving, then we'll come back to the courthouse. Discussion of vehicle purchase for health department.
Well, as you know, one of our vehicles was damaged in the hailstorm and was totaled. So I worked with Jessica to get some bids of vehicles, and she just passed that out to you. So some of the issues, you know, the, the Malibu would be the cheapest option to get a new Malibu. I think the issue with that is we would have to order it and it would be at least eight weeks.
Eighty days.
Eighty days, okay. So, and most of the other new ones, too, you know, with the car factories being shut down, they, getting a new vehicle is really difficult. And then Sheriff Wheeler was talking about the vehicles that are available off the cooperative agreement with the higher patrol. So we checked with them, and they have a 2018 Dodge Charger that's all-wheel drive and has about 50,000 miles, and it's available for purchase for $18,950.
And it would be ready in a couple of weeks, so.
Does it got the Hemi in it?
Yes.
It's a Corvette.
We'll have to go see.
Can we have the lights and sirens? We might have a public health emergency.
So are any of these others available, or?
They're, I think the, they will all have to be ordered. I forgot the Escape and the Explorer. Some were like eight, 16 weeks out.
16 weeks and 14 weeks. There was one Equinox ready. It would be ready next week, but that's if it didn't sell between over the weekend, pretty much.
And the only Jeep compasses that Chrysler had in stock were manual transmissions, which for some of us, that's fine. But other people at the staff, I didn't think they would want that. We probably should get automatics, so.
I'm fine with your recommendation. I just think it's kind of funny that we have 2018 Chargers from the Missouri Highway Patrol that are made in Frampton, Ontario, Canada. So, just saying.
Well, of course, you gotta, yeah, 50,000 miles on the Charger versus, you know, if you went with the Equinox. Equinox, I mean, it's a little bit more money, but it doesn't have any miles on it either. It's brand new.
If it's still ready and.
Yeah.
What, what was your recommendation? I guess I didn't hear that.
Right, well, my recommendation, instead of waiting eight or 10, you know, I was looking for the cheapest option.
Right.
Because try to be good stewards of the money, so I was thinking the Malibu, but eight weeks is too long to wait. I mean, if the Equinox is still available, if they haven't sold it, that's fine. If you want to spend a little bit more money. Otherwise, I'm fine with getting the Charger. It is the second cheapest, and we can get it quicker than waiting, like, eight or 16 weeks to get a brand-new one, so.
If you want me to contact the dealership for the Equinox, I can, and then if it's ready, we can go ahead and pursue that.
Might want to leave that Charger even if they need it over at Springer Center, because I think that's what they have.
Oh, yeah.
So they might, they might be looking at both of them.
Yeah.
So I'd check on that.
Equinox, okay.
Okay.
I think that, yeah, you've got the warranty and everything on it, so it's.
We just, with the new ones being so hard to come by, we were not sure that we would be able to get that one, so.
So you're gonna check on the Equinox, then?
And then I can double-check with Michael about the Charger for the Springer Center.
He probably already has the cage.
Are there Chargers that got totaled?
Mm-hmm.
Every car you give away gets totaled. Arsenal permanent.
So if the Equinox is available, do you want to go with that one?
I think so.
That would be my recommendation.
I think so.
Okay.
Well, and the Highway Patrol had two Chargers available. I could reach out to make sure they hadn't given them away. So then if the Equinox isn't, we could still go with the Charger for the health department and the Charger for Springer.
Yeah, we can talk to Michael and see if he had mine. He may have had something else in mind, too, so.
Was it the Charger?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure he's kind of limited. He's got other cages.
Right, and we.
Well, they probably need a cage for Joe, don't you? He's not changed.
He's not here to fit himself. I'm gonna introduce Jenna.
The cage from that older vehicle, I don't believe is gonna fit in a newer Charger.
I don't think you could salvage that other cage anyways.
I may have one for him.
Be great.
Yeah, I, I may have one for him.
Okay. Okay, then we'll go with the Equinox.
Yeah, Equinox first, Charger second, okay. And then while I'm here, I want to introduce Jenna Massey. She's our new environmental, public health specialist. She took Brandon's position, and she had a chance, got a chance to meet you guys. So her and Don will keep it alive.
All right, welcome to the table.
Welcome, thank you.
You just bought her a new car.
Okay. Discussion approval protocol app?
Good morning.
That was Matt's, okay.
So we're currently in a major rewrite of our protocols, and actually, crews are being trained on them next week. And the, we got pricing from one of the local printing shops. And to order, to do that, it's $6,600 to print them out so that we can provide a copy to each one. We still have to print out protocols to put in the trucks, so the printer that we purchased before will still help save those costs. And the retraining and things, and as COVID goes along, we still have to do all the. What this does is for $1,999, it allows us to per, put all our protocols into an app for the crews that they can look up and study. It also allows us to allow first responders and like Jefferson City Fire Department and all the other agencies that use our protocols, access to them as well, so it saves them on printing costs as well, so that their crews would have them. They could put them on their units if they wanted to, on an iPad or iPhone, something along those lines. So what we'd like to do is get your approval. We'll take the money that we would spend in printing costs out of that line item and instead just use it for this app.
That makes sense.
Saves about $230.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you mailed that information to us. I'm good with it.
Yeah, I'm good, too.
Okay.
I have to go to the closed session or something, right? I move that we sign the agreement with Acid Remap LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Discussion of courthouse site improvement. GBH is coming, but it's gonna be about 10 o'clock, and I'd like to have them here. We might go ahead and do our closed session and come back into.
I can't do mine until 10:30.
Yeah, yours is 10:30, so if we.
We can wait on that one.
There are two other closed sessions that we can.
Yeah, we could do that, and then at 10, come back into closed, open session, do courthouse, courthouse site improvements, then go back into closed session. How's that? Okay.
We're gonna go into closed session for security systems and bids and contracts, is that right?
And another legal action.
But that's not till 10:30, right?
No, but there's two of them.
Yeah.
At 10:30, or?
No.
One now, one at 10:30.
One now, one at 10:30.
Okay, okay. I was trying to clarify. All right, I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.02, one of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal action, Sub 1, security systems, Sub 19, and bids and contracts, Sub 12.
Second.
Roll call.
Oh, Sam?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Sorry if you're not involved in the closed session.
Okay, we'll see. Yep, okay, we'll go back into open session. Do we want to do old business first real quick?
We can.
Okay.
As you guys know, you guys originally signed a contract with BKB to help us with the CARES Act. Being administrator, this is just an extension of that original contract to go ahead and with the full-fledged contract with this company to help us administer and find out the CARES money.
Okay.
And then do have a little bit of a press release. Do you want to go out today and put on our website? And I talked to Melissa yesterday, and she's gonna do the flash-up of applications to come for the care leave money to.
Is it copy that, or?
Uh, no, but I can give you a copy of that, okay.
Is this any other issues?
Yeah, old business.
I move that we sign the contract with BKB.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And then we did an emergency.
Can I stay old business for a minute?
Oh, yes.
We found out about the vehicles for, the one is available, the Equinox is available, so the health department is gonna take that one. Michael Cootie is very satisfied with the Charger, the 2018 Charger. If you guys so wish to say that we can do both of those, and we can take them off the agenda for next week.
Yeah, if he's good with that.
I am fine, yeah, it's.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
An emergency purchase.
Yeah, we did an emergency purchase last Friday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I move that we ratify the emergency purchase with Overhead Door Company of Central Missouri for some replacement of aluminum slats to fix a door in the law enforcement center.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we will go with Patrick. We are discussing our landscape.
Sorry to make you guys wait.
Yeah.
And I know you all did a walkthrough a couple of weeks ago, and then this is your, your findings and recommendations.
So we basically walked through, Patrick, Architects Alliance, we've got Architects Alliance and GBH here. But yeah, they did the walkthrough a couple of weeks ago and kind of went through everything with a fine-tooth comb and laid out a list in the email of, of everything that, that we found to be deficient or, you know, things of comment, and along with several pictures of different items. Some of it is somewhat subjective. You know, nothing that's of a, a critical nature, but maybe doesn't look the best. Some of it looks worse than others. But wanted to just kind of put everything on the table and at least start the discussion. Let GBH weigh in on what things can be, you know, what thing, what they can do to, to try to improve the, the items that we made note of. So the purpose of the, of the letter was just to identify the items and then start the discussion on what the remedies will wind up being, so.
Okay.
I think a lot of it's more or less cosmetic, except for the stairs.
Yeah, there's, you know, the, some of the, you know, some of the finish on the exposed aggregate is, you know, a little uneven, more uneven than we'd like. You know, some of the saw joints are, are not real clean and, and somewhat wavy. Some of them are, are pretty, pretty, you know, it doesn't look like a clean saw joint. It's, you know, looked like it was supposed to have been trialed, but maybe wasn't trialed the best. Like I said, it's things that, you know, in a perfect world, you'd like them to look better, but, you know, they are what they are at this point. There's, I think, a couple of places, Pat, where there was a little bit of vertical differential between different pores, you know. That's something that probably ought to be looked at as far as potential trip hazards. Like you said, the steps, there was, like, they were missing color on one.
On the Monroe Street side was missing, looked like it was missing color that was specified at one point. And then there was a vertical difference between the heights of the stairs, so that's kind of a tripping hazard. Those are more critical items, like Paul's saying, so.
And they hold water.
And they hold water, so in the winter, we're gonna have ice scene problems. And there's actually some sidewalk areas that hold water as well, so those are, those are the ones that we would think that would probably for sure need to be fixed. What else, like, we found out after this last large rainfall event we had, we actually had water in the basement again in the courthouse, so there's an area there that we need to look at probably, so.
So those are our two biggest, or the.
And then probably the flagpole base would be.
The stairs and the flagpole base, and then the foundation.
Yeah, and some of that stuff, you know, depending on what the remedy is for the flagpole, you may, if, if you ultimately end up tearing out some of these things, you, you might get into some of that exposed aggregate concrete that's got those deficient joints, and then you end up tearing some of that stuff out, so that leads to other things. But there's, there's obviously a starting and stopping point to some of those things that you can, like Paul said, you can live with some things, but there's some things that are just gonna have to happen to, to get to the point where we're satisfied, you know, compliant-wise, so.
And GBH is willing to stand behind it, so I'm.
Yeah, absolutely. We're not, we're, we agree with everything that they pointed out. I think the stairs on the Monroe side definitely need, they probably just need to come out and be redone. We're not happy with those at all. Appearance, bonding, irregular, you know, height differences, so. I think that's a, that's a definite one. Hold, the flagpole base is another one. You know, we thought, as opposed to tearing it completely out, perhaps we could encase it in a, in concrete and give it a new straight, you know, make it look like what it's supposed to. The dimensions might be slightly larger than what it was called out originally, but we're basically dialing, dialing what's there, or around the outside, the footing underneath it, you know, to give it a nice clean edge. We even talked about maybe a cab for the top of that, you know, a stone cab or something, which, you know, we're prepared to take care of. We're certainly willing. Do I have to go on the mic? Okay. So then again, with, like Patrick said, they've got some aggregate out in that immediate area around the flagpole base that I think's, there's some, there's some pretty rough areas there that we'd like to take care of. And really, the only way to take care of that is to take it out and redo it, which we're prepared to do. I mean, it's a, that's a focal point. We want it to look nice. It does not, end result now is not what we're trying to achieve. So we want to take another crack at that, and then, you know, the extent of that, where we go with exposed aggregate, I think it would probably be good if we, you know, took a few minutes and just walked the side and just, you know, I could bring a plan, we can mark it up, highlight it, you know, this area gets redone, this is okay, this isn't. Have you guys done anything since we? We power washed everything, washed in everything that following Saturday, maybe. So we've got the signage clean, a lot of the poles and stuff. I think the exposed aggregate looks better, but it doesn't. The problem areas with it were more with the tooling and, you know, the different heights. It was, it wasn't just a surface blemish. And so, although I think we made it look maybe a little more uniform and cleaned up some areas that needed cleaning, filled in the asphalt, that kind of thing, we still have several, quite a, a pretty good-sized area out front, in front of the flagpole base, and it needs to be redone, so. And we've got an area down towards the alley coming down High Street that's got an area holding water. Now, that's something we need to probably look at. You know, you raise that panel, I think you just move the ponding to a different location, so we need to look at how we, you know, that's, that's definitely gonna be a problem area. You'll have ice, an ice patch there that you don't want, so we do something to it. We need to make sure we're not creating a problem somewhere else when we do that, so.
What about my little fish pond out here?
Right here at the alley?
Yeah.
That's the one I'm referring to.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to do something with that, besides fish, so.
And I think maybe Eric Linger said that there was plans to maybe redo that parking lot at some point in the future. And we talked about possibly raising that curb lineup a little bit to help that, those grades. And if we could do that in conjunction with that project, we would all kind of things together at that point.
Raise it up and even just, you put a little temporary patch in there. I think Craig talked to them, they were prepared to let us do our thing, and they'll come in behind us. So I think it probably, it extends into that curb going up toward meets the building, which we have a little area there that didn't get filled in anyway. So we may even look to look at that little stretch, making it work, too, with new grades, so. But yeah, definitely need to address that. It's a bad area. It's holding water today, as a matter of fact, Walker advised, so. So I, we're, we're on board for everything that we mentioned, and I think it'd be a good idea, like I said, to just walk through and just highlight the areas that we're gonna address. And then, once we have that, then we can kind of develop a game plan. We're gonna go about it a little bit different this time as far as crew goes, how it happens, who does it, and then we can kind of say, okay, we'd like to do this first, take about this many days, this second, you know, try, try to minimize the downtime for the air, you know, traffic, foot traffic, so.
Yeah, because the courts.
Absolutely.
Made both of those, so.
Yeah, so obviously, it's, you know, it's a pretty big inconvenience to shut down that whole entrance, to redo those steps. But, you know, I think the alternative is to cut that in half, which probably isn't a great alternative. But, you know, maybe we can take a little closer look at it and determine, hey, it's gonna be this many days, and, and commit to that and, and make it realistic, so maybe they can help us there, so. With some time to do it, but I think that's the only fix for that, Wes. Yeah, so obviously it's, you know, it's a pretty big inconvenience to shut down that whole entrance, to redo those steps, but, you know, I think the alternative is to cut that in half, which probably isn't a great alternative, but, you know, maybe we can take a little closer look at it and determine, hey, it's gonna be this many days and, and commit to that and, and make it realistic, so maybe they can help us there, so. With some time to do it, but I think that's the only fix for that west side of steps is redo.
I don't know if we have any questions. I mean, you've acknowledged that there are the items that they pointed out.
Absolutely.
We'll take care of them. And I think we do need to get a work plan together so that it is as little as an inconvenience on the courts and, but I mean, I think we need to be realistic with it too, so.
Yeah. You know, we could even, you know, the weather, I think there's a little more to just, when does it work to pour that aggregate? I mean, the weather needs to be right too. And so we need to look at it and make sure those conditions are cooperating, so we're not rushing. You know, that's a, that's a, a little more to that type of pour than your regular pour, so we wanna make sure that we're doing it, going about it the right way. We have a plan, but it's implemented at the right time. And so, and it can be, I mean, we'll be at, whatever, you say, no, it's not gonna work that week, we'll look at a different week, you know, whatever. You just don't want to be doing it when it's 100 degrees out. That's right.
So the foundation leak, you know, we're gonna have to dig that down again?
That, I'm not sure. We need to, I need to look at that. I talked to Greg a couple of days after it happened and I hadn't been over to look at it, but I, I don't know if that's maybe just a grade problem or, yeah, I'm not sure. So I can't say for sure, but possibly, yeah. And if that's the case, that's what, what will happen, yeah, so.
I don't have any more questions or anything. Y'all are kind of ramrod.
Yeah, so we'll get with GBH, we'll schedule a time to, to go out and kinda get in detail of, kinda do a follow-through, follow-up walkthrough and come up with a, a game plan on exactly what to do with each of the items and let Jake go back, put a, put the schedule together and, and figure out how many days on each item we'll have and go from there. There are some items on this list that I think we can probably take care of in the meantime and we'll.
Yeah.
Do that, get somebody scheduled to get up here and start addressing some of the other punch list items, so.
And we need to kinda talk to the courts, 'cause those steps, yeah, we really do need to kinda work around their schedules.
Yep, absolutely.
You know, if we take close one, what we, it may when they don't have any jury trials or something.
I got to experience some of that.
Yeah.
So I, I know exactly what you're talking about, so.
Yeah.
One question I guess I would have, on the High Street side, we do have a set of steps there and there is a drop-off condition there, so I don't know if we need, I don't know whether handrails are scheduled to be put in, but.
I think they're telling, well, I don't think, they're telling, telling us the end of this week. So if, if that's the case, we'll just put the permanent ones in. If that's not, we'll put some temporaries in if that would.
We've been living with it like this for a few weeks now, but.
Yeah, well.
I'll get one in.
Yeah, so we'll know, you know, I mean, it's Tuesday, so next couple of days, we'll get those, you know, by the end of the week, have them in. If not, we'll have some temporary ones in like we did the other side, even if it's just for a few days, you know, so. I think probably go ahead and on that side, High Street side, install those. Question would then be on the Monroe Street side, do we wait on those or if we know we're coming out, that step, steps coming out soon, do we just wait on the, you know? Yeah. You know, a big thing for us too is I'd really like to make sure I've got the right people available, so we do a good job. And, and I know that that's not next week, you know, it's gonna take a handful of, you know, good, good man to do it. And so, once we know the full scope, we'll be able to say and then just work around the, the course schedule. But I, you know, it seems like the temporaries are working for now. They're not, it's not the prettiest set of handrails, but if we know the sets, that set of concrete, sets that's coming out, it'd be good to wait on them for a minute, so.
Our little garden area there in front where Jeff and I parked, that'll be done too, right? Where the steps were.
Yeah, yeah, that'll be part of that area that's bonding there, so.
Okay.
I don't have any else, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you guys. Apologize to keep, for keeping you waiting this morning, just a couple of things going, so. Yes, ma'am. Anything else?
Nope.
Yeah.
I'd like a good plan.
We'll go back into closed session.
Thanks, that's okay. I just wanna make sure it's right.
Thanks.
Thanks. He did send it out or?
Christiansen, our department's budget saying it was due back to her. I, I assume you want to use the same kinda setup that we did last year. That is, the department heads would come in and meet with the auditor and us at the same time. Is that, did that work out pretty good for you guys last year?
Yeah.
I think we'll kinda, I'll arrange that with Christiansen, so we'll go ahead and get the budget calendar out for when we want.
Okay, anything else? Alright, I move we go back into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri for legal actions, Sub 1.
Second.
Roll call. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. This afternoon?
Yeah.
Uh, it is interview.